Their future husbands.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
Fix itself.
Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting the Pine Top Lakeside Town Council to order. We do have a quorum, I would ask that everybody remember to silence your cellphones. And I would also ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation.
My pledge is to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask the Vice Mayor to give the invocation tonight, I'd ask you to join me in a moment of silence for Dawn Ray. Dawn was one of our original council members, served as mayor in this community, and was a very well-loved and respected teacher and coach at Blue Ridge.
Our Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful for this opportunity we have to gather together for this council meeting this evening. We are so thankful for this beautiful community in which we live in, for the opportunities that are offered us here. We're grateful for this free nation that we live in and pray that Thou would watch over and protect those who serve in our military here and around the world, bless them. We're thankful for the many first responders and pray that Thou would watch over and protect them and their families. We're also mindful of our dedicated employees we have here in the town of Pine Top Lakeside and pray that Thou would bless and protect them and bless their families. And now, as we go forth with this meeting, we pray for a spirit of understanding and cooperation and guidance as we look at things that need to be taken care of for our town and what would be in the best interest for our community. And these blessings we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Item B on our agenda tonight is called to the public. This is a business meeting of the Town Council. The Town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up in call to the public is limited by the open meeting law. The council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration a later date. Items on the agenda are not heard during call to the public and individuals are limited to three minutes. At this point, I have no request for call to the public. So we'll move on then to item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of Town Council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda and items removed are considered in their normal sequence unless called out of sequence. As you can see, we have three items on the consent agenda tonight. Are there any questions or comments from the council on this? I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Thank you, we have a motion of second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Item D is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item either before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed at staff or member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 is an update by Pickleball Club on fundraising efforts for the Community Pickleball Court Expansion Project. Mark, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Mark Dilson, I am the Board President for the Pine Top Lakeside Pickleball Club. This evening, I want to provide you an update on the fundraising efforts that we put together for the pickleball court expansion. This month, which is October, we're wrapping up a very successful summer season where the club has experienced tremendous growth. We've seen over 600 players at the club this summer. We continue to serve the community by offering free beginner lessons twice a week and we also offer skills and drills classes to our members for free. Normally, we see a lot of slowdown September, October, with a lot of the summer crowd disappearing. We have not seen as much slowdown this year. The word has gotten out about our club and there is a lot of new people coming out. We have actually been getting new members every month and we actually had one of our beginner lessons this last month that had 27 new players come out. So fundraising status, I want to update you on that. Just this week, we passed our goal that we had set at the beginning of the year to get $100,000 by the end of October. So we are now at $102,302 raised towards this project. This has really been a grassroots effort by hundreds of members of our club. We've been doing things, as you know, like donations, silent auction, raffles, T-shirt sales, and we did run two pickleball tournaments to raise money. As Malena previously shared with you, the submittal timeline for the Arizona State Parks and Trails grant was moved up. So it was originally supposed to be in November, we had to get that grant submittal, Malena had to get that done by end of September. So prior to the grant application's middle, our board met with Malena to discuss our input to the grant application. Due to the workforce reductions at Public Works and the resulting decrease of in-kind labor that was going to be part of that grant application, our board voted to pull from our reserves and that have been accumulated due to the fees that we charge and increase our contribution to grant application from the $100,000 that we had originally planned to $125,000. This not only increases the likelihood that the town should receive this grant, but it also allows for if there's any possible shortfalls for material purchases for the core construction, they should be able to take care of that. So while our club had originally planned to wrap up all of our fundraising efforts this month in anticipation of a November grant submittal, because of this increase in need for funds as well as just the fact that we could continue to fundraise, the money does not need to be released until next year, our board has decided to go ahead and continue our fundraising efforts through the end of the year. So together with Public Works, we're confident that, you know, based on past experience, that this grant's submittal should be successful and that we should be ready for a construction start in 2026. So Mayor and council members, with your support, I believe that this new community pickleball court could be a great asset to this community. It'll allow us to continue serving the community by expanding the pickleball presence, will be a resource to the local schools, and will also allow us to be able to host tournaments which would increase tax revenues for the town. Any questions that you all have as far as our fundraising efforts and activities we have going on?
Any questions for Mark? Appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you, appreciate you all's time. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming. You're welcome anytime. Item D2 on our agenda is the presentation of the September 2025 financial report. Finance Director Gabe Boldra.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. We have the September financials in the packet, kind of go over summary of the month, actually year-to-date, so we're through our first full fiscal quarter. Right now, revenues are sitting right at about $2,94,000 for the general fund. That's about 22% of our projected revenue for the year. However, if you back out the contingency revenue, so to speak, that puts us right at, we're right at 25.9%. So we're kind of right on target from a month-to-month perspective on revenue. I will point out, though, we are seeing an overall decline year-over-year, not a big decline, but about a 5% drop in total sales tax revenue when we compare this time to the end of this month to the same time last year. But when I look at it from a budget perspective, we're off about $80,000 in the first three months. So not a huge variance, but also something to kind of be cognizant of as we move forward. As you can see from the graph there, some of the things driving that, really construction and our commercial, and actually both residential and commercial rentals are down. Obviously, residential rentals are no longer subject to transaction privilege tax, and then commercial is down, and then construction's one of the biggest drivers. The variance is being made up, though, by retail and restaurant and bars, so it's not as big of an impact to us overall. As far as expenditures go, we're sitting right now at a total of $2,175,000 in expenditures for the general fund. That's at 22% again at this point, you know, if we were at budget or exceeded budget, we'd be 25% or over, so we are under budget through this point. There are a few areas of variance to kind of mention, we've talked about it already, a lot of it was driven by some expenditures that occurred earlier in the fiscal year. Some of the examples, magistrate is at 72%, but a large percentage of their budget is the contract with the county, and so that's paid at the beginning of the year, and so we're just kind of spending that down. We had a large, we had actually an engine replacement on one of our engines, and so that's what's driving our fleet maintenance, and then Town Council's another budget that, you know, those subscription fees were paid earlier in the year, and so it's going to take us a little bit moving through the year to kind of catch up as far as a percentage of budget from where we're at. Do another thing I do want to point out, personnel costs are sitting at 72.8%. If you look at the detail in the packet, you'll see we're well over, not well over, but we are trending over that 25% in our personnel costs. That's because the budget as a percentage is divided by 12, whereas our pay periods are every two weeks, and so by about December, January, we'll kind of catch up with the pay periods and the months, and that'll start to look better. So we are monitoring that, though. As far as other funds, special revenue funds, those are all sitting right now at $1,395,000 in total expenditures. Obviously, there's some large grant potentials and contingencies, that's really only looking at 4%, but more specifically on our streets, tourism and parks, all are well within, you know, the realm of the budget. Obviously, with streets and parks, a lot of the work is done in the first part of the year, and those will kind of slow down as we move into the winter months in the second half of the year. As far as general fund cash position, we ended the month with $1,479,000 in the general fund. Our cash went up month-over-month by about $327,000. And so we're right now, projected through September to be at $791,000 year-end cash to the general fund, but I will add a caveat to that. Based on all the changes that have been recommended by council have been enacted by Manager Miller, and so for the October financials and cash flow going forward, those changes will be reflected in a revised budget within the reporting as well as updated cash flow. And with those changes, we're projected around $1.5 million year-end general fund cash with those changes. Again, projecting revenues stay on track and expenditures stay on track. And so next month, when you get the October report, all those changes will be enacted and in place, so.
Thank you for bringing that up. I was going to ask you because I looked back at August and September, it's like we made all those changes and the numbers haven't changed, so.
Right, and the reason we didn't, because really this is looking, you know, this is looking in the past to September, and so when we look forward and have the budget looking forward, I wanted to have that clear cutoff starting October 1.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So next month, we'll see a big difference.
Next month, we'll see a big, big jump in our year-end projected cash, and that'll be, that'll be nice to see for all of us, so.
Yes, thank you.
Unless there's any other questions, that's the report for September.
Any questions for Gabe? Okay, thank you for being here, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
We'll move on then to item D3, which is a discussion and consider legal action on Resolution Number 25-1793, canceling the purchasing agreement with Mojave Educational Services Cooperative, Inc. Kristi?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you. This contract was originally approved by council to purchase food for things like the employee appreciation dinner and town potlucks that we're not really doing anymore, so in an effort to try to save some money, we've kind of decided to kind of go away from the employee appreciation there, so we're going to figure some, another way to show appreciation to our employees. The town has a holding fund account with Mojave Aspen that is holding $1,500. We've been paying an annual payment of $308.85. In order to get this money back from them, terminating it a little early, we have to have a notice of intention to terminate from council, which is by resolution, which is what I have for you tonight. So staff recommends approving the cancellation of this contract, just don't need it anymore.
Okay, thank you, Kristi. Any questions or comments for Kristi?
There's no fees required for getting out early or anything like?
No, they're not going to charge us anything to get out.
Okay, I would entertain a motion then. Vice Mayor?
I move to approve Resolution Number 25-1793, canceling the purchasing agreement with Mojave Educational Services Cooperative, Inc., effective immediately, and authorize interim Town Manager designate to provide written notice of termination in accordance with the agreement.
A second then.
Thank you, we have a motion of seconds and further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Kristi. Good night, Gabe. We'll move on then to item D4, which is discussion and consider legal action for Resolution Number 25-1792, entering into an intergovernmental agreement between the Navajo County Sheriff's Office, the cities of Winslow and Cholo, and the town of Pine Top Lakeside regarding the burn grant and Arizona local border support funding purchase for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Chief Barnes?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This is our annual renewal for the, through the Navajo County Sheriff's Office. They maintain and run the MCAT, it's called, it's the Major Crimes Apprehension Team, and each year we, we don't usually have anybody with, on the team just because of staffing and different things, but we like to keep our IGAs up to date just in case we do at some point, so this is a renewal for that. The task force basically focuses on providing services regarding illegal drugs, gangs, and violent crimes within Navajo County, and they do a fantastic job for the amount of people they do countywide. And that sometimes that branches out into other counties around the state because it leads them in different directions, so what they do is very important. And if, if we have a point in time where we're able to bring somebody on board for that, we'd like to have the agreement in place. So if we do have somebody that comes on board, the grant would cover roughly 75% of the salary, which is about $88,000. That is built into the budget currently under the grants, but we don't have anything built in to make up the gap for salary or ERE, so we don't anticipate putting anybody in this year, but we still like to have our, all of our IGAs up to date, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Chief Barnes?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Just wondering, when, have we had someone in MCAT in the past?
We have in the past, yes.
How long ago was that, the last?
Quite a while, like about 15 years, I think, so.
And I know they provide, do they also provide a vehicle for them?
They do. Yeah, they cover, they provide a vehicle, they also cover a chunk of overtime as well, so I think around $10,000 in overtime costs.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
We can aspire to having somebody. Anyway, I'd entertain a motion on this one then. Council Heisler?
I move to approve Resolution Number 25-1792, entering into an intergovernmental agreement between the Navajo County Sheriff's Office, the cities of Winslow and Cholo, and the town of Pine Top Lakeside regarding the Byron Grant and Arizona Local Border Support Funding for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion of second and further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work on that. Item D5 is discussion and consider legal action of Resolution Number 25-1794, authorizing the recycling partnership grant agreement for the residential recycling drop-off program. Interim Public Works Director Malena Stillman.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. As always, my pleasure to be here this evening. This is bringing some really good news, long-awaited award of the recycling partnership grant. We received the award notification, and it is for $100,000. We have also secured their permission to utilize partial funding, or parts of that funding, to essentially pay back general fund for the purchase of the truck that we purchased in February, which was a little under $32,000. And then additionally, we'll be purchasing roll-off cans, some new 20-yard cans and 40-yard cans to replace some of the ones that have just seen better days. So those also have lids on them. If you've gone to the collection center, you've noticed some of our cans, the lids have broken just over the years of opening them every day, and that is part of our ADQ requirements to keep anything that is, potentially could blow out and cause any contamination and litter that we have that contained. So that will help allow our staff, and Erica's here this evening, it will help him, them to not have to tarp every night, especially when we have windy conditions. Additionally, as part of that grant, there's $10,000 that will be used for public outreach and education. So we, I've met with the recycling partnership, and I'm really excited about the $10,000 for the educational outreach, because this is going to include some new signage for the collection center, brochures, and even potentially having some mailers like we've done in the past to go out to really try to drum up some more support of the collection center as well as, of course, business and increase our funding. So before you tonight is just the approval of that grant agreement so that we can move forward on that.
Thank you, Malena. Are there any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion.
I have a question.
Hang on a second, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Just a question while we're on this. I know in the past, we've sometimes rented containers out to neighborhoods to do pickup and stuff.
Yes.
I mean, would this afford us of more available to do that kind of thing if that was requested of us?
Yeah, absolutely, that's certainly something that we could look at. One of the things that we have to, to really be careful with is that we can't compete commercially, so we want to always make sure that we're being careful with not competing for, for commercial trash service. So if there's, you know, that's something that we could certainly look at. I know we've done it for Woodland Hills in the past, and I think that's a great thing. Certainly, one of the things that I think is very important is to keep our communities firewise and encourage the cleanup of our yards, and I know that was the biggest part at Woodland Hills. So certainly looking into doing something like that would be very beneficial to our community.
Okay, thank you.
Council Smith?
I move to approve Resolution Number 25-1794, authorizing the recycling partnership grant agreement for the residential recycling drop-off program, and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete said grant agreement.
I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion of second and further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Malena. We'll move on then to item D6, which is discussion and consider legal action on Resolution Number 25-1795, approving the Arizona State Parks and Trails and Grant Application for the Pine Top Lakeside Pickleball Courts Project Number PR26-001. Malena?
Good evening again. As, as Mark, the president of the Pickleball Club here in Pine Top Lakeside has, we've talked about this numerous times, and he gave the amazing update with their fundraising efforts, and they have, I believe I've said this before, they've just been a pleasure to work with, especially Mark, has just been a pleasure to work with. This is something that I always would say, oh my gosh, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America, I hear that all the time. It really actually is. It's amazing the amount of people that play pickleball, and from all ages and walks of life. This is something that I think would definitely benefit our community. As Mark said, we did have to go ahead and submit the grant that was due, it was originally due on September 29th, they changed that to September 30th, and we've gotten the application submitted. However, as part of finalizing that grant application is to have a resolution. So we submitted a draft resolution as part of the grant application, but this would just be finalizing that grant application to help us move forward. The Arizona State Parks and Trails Board would approve the application, and then it goes on to the National Park Service for further approval.
Okay, thank you, Malena. Couple of questions, I think that, you know, this, this is going to require a lot of parks money to make this happen, which I think that the council's all in agreement, the community, that this is a great use of our funds.
Absolutely.
But what's the timeline?
The grant agreement is for three years, so it's a three-year timeline project, so it's, it's things that we can bite off in small chunks. It's not something that we have budgeted now, we're looking at the award to be somewhere between six and 12 months. Previously, I would say it's going to be closer to six months in light of the government shutdown that we're currently experiencing. That's going to push things out and delay it. I would hope that's not going to delay us too much, but pending the grant agreement, we're looking at breaking ground and starting the project in the fall of '26. So we'd be budgeting, we'd begin budgeting for it here in the next couple of months so that we can get at least the first portion of that completed.
Okay, and then when we met with a lot of the pickleball folks two, three weeks ago, we had some conversations about ways if we needed to just kind of phase the project a little bit. Can you just address that so everybody?
Yeah, absolutely. So phasing the project, initially, we had talked about taking the project and breaking it up into essentially two phases, where we would do the restrooms, the parking lot there in front of the gym, and then maybe the two pickleball courts that, I guess you would say, it ends up being really four courts, the two pads there, and the lighting for the whole project. But when we really looked at it and we were breaking it down, it really wasn't, in our opinion, the best way to move forward. Certainly, things have changed in light of our staff changes at, at Public Works and budgetary constraints with the town of Pine Top Lakeside. However, one of the things that we did talk about moving forward was to take and kind of budget those necessary things, so certainly getting those pickleball courts, the pads, the post-tension slabs done, the bathrooms is a necessity, all that plumbing and water and everything has already been put in when we were doing the PD project, so that's not an expense that we have to worry about. The lighting is something that we can do a little bit later on. It's in the grant proposal, but that's not something that we have to do right away in that first year. We already have conduit and everything right over there to, to get the electric, so we can stub that up. And then another, one of the, the things that we talked about, maybe kind of breaking up into a little bit later on is the fencing. So there's been several things that we've talked about, as well as the benches. The benches, some of the picnic pavilions, those are not included in the grant, just to keep down some of those costs, so that we can go back and we can do those at a later date. Now, the, like I said, the lighting and the fencing is all included in the grant, but that's things that we can do at the end of the grant, so that we're at that end of that three-year period.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from Malena?
Good job.
I would entertain a motion then. Council Heisler?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 25-1795, approving the Arizona State Parks and Trails Grant Application for the town of Pine Top Lakeside Pickleball Complex. for the town of Pinetop Lakeside Pickleball Complex, project number PR26001, and authorize the town manager or his designee to execute all documents necessary to complete said grant application.
And I'll second that. We have a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Melena.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark and your team. We appreciate everybody's hard work on this. Okay, we'll move on then to Item D7, which is our Town Council Committee Liaison and Town Manager Monthly Reports. I'll start with Counselor Turner.
The Community Center now has two new board members. Councilman Phillips and Councilman Turner were approved. And we're still looking, our treasurer has been doing the job for seven years and wants to go do something else. So, we're looking for another board member with accounting experience to step up to.
Who would that be?
I don't know. I just float those out there. That's all. The Nature Center is an interesting situation. There are no public meetings. They're quarterly now. So, the next meeting that I can attend is December 8th, so I have nothing to report there. I'm trying to understand why. I've got to try to make some contacts, and I don't know why yet.
All right, Counselor Phillips?
Humane Society, a couple of updates. As always, they need staff. They have a lot of animals that need to be adopted. Some progress has been made with the Forest Service. They've been working on it for like 15 years, trying to get that little section of land deeded to them, so they can actually expand. I talked to Mark this morning, and he said they had to contact Senator Kelly's office, and they're helping them, and it's actually got some traction now, which has been really good. So, hopefully they'll hear something soon. The other thing is, they just installed a backup generator system. It's not quite operational yet, but that was all thanks to donations and fundraisers that they were able to do that. So, we'll have backup power for the animals in case of a power outage. So, we'll have air conditioning. They also are in the process, they just got the foundation stem walls poured for the new cat house. So, they're working on that. They're going to have a special area just for the kitty cats. So, we're looking forward to getting that done.
Thank you. Counselor Heisler?
I have nothing to report.
Vice Mayor?
Attended Council School Board meeting a couple of days ago. A lot going on with Blue Ridge. A lot of changes, a lot of exciting things happening. Just upcoming, the grade school is doing this Saturday, a Saturday trunk-or-treat carnival from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., raising money for their activities there. And also, the junior high is doing, again, a Veterans Day breakfast, and that'll be, more will be forthcoming on that. So, sports teams are all doing well. Blue Ridge Football will be at Sholo tomorrow. And as far as the museum, museum is also always looking for people, for the board, and even to help at the museum as far as guiding through. There will be a meeting here Monday at 3:30, but the museum is planning, they will close at, on October 30th, and stay closed until March. But until then, it's open Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And I would just like to note that the town had purchased candy for the Fall Festival Parade, and since we canceled that, we were able to help the elementary schools' efforts out with their Autumn Fest for Saturday. So, we did make some contributions to that. Counselor Smith?
A couple of things. Yeah, the Transit Advisory Council Committee has, we have asked the transit manager to make a presentation to council. We wanted to have this in our work session when the subject came up that, you know, maybe we could eliminate transit, you know, from our budget. And we decided, no, it was really an essential service. So, the manager of the Transit Authority will be here November 6th for our meeting, and she will be much more eloquent than I am at telling you how good a deal this is for the town to have the transit system operating. And she can give you all the particulars and exactly what each of the ADOT grants pays for, which is a huge amount. It's like 80%, of the cost of this system. So, she'll be able to give everybody a really good feel for how important the transit is and how it's being funded and all of that. That would be on November 6th. The Arizona Alpine Trail is doing great. We are starting, this winter, we'll have our town hall meetings with all of the towns that are connected to the Arizona Alpine Trail. And we need, we're going to try to bring in Arizona Office of Tourism, as well as the Office of Outdoor Recreation Manager for the state, to attend these meetings and kind of coordinate all the marketing, so that all the towns can market kind of the same way. And it'll be a united effort for the state to market the trail that way. And we are very pleased that the photographer that we have, taking pictures for our trail, has completed all of his photos, and he has a photograph in Arizona Highways next year. And he's just wonderful. He's really good. So, we're, we'll probably divide up these town hall meetings and maybe do one, what I call the heart of the trail would be Pinetop, Sholo, maybe Taylor Snowflake, possibly Heber, but we're going to decide how we're going to divide that up. And then, of course, Payson and Pine and Strawberry and Forest Lakes, all of that will be another one. And then the east side will also be one. We're updating our website. That'll be fun. And I'm, we're looking for someone who could help us with social media. We know that marketing to the users of OHVs really rely on social media to get information on the condition of the trails, what's open, what isn't open, give feedback, talk about how great it is, or what's wrong with it. But we are not experts, anybody on the board, yet. So, if anybody knows of someone who would like to really help out a 501(c)(3) charitable organization, we would appreciate that. Social media is something that I just don't deal with. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Smith. A couple of quick items to report for myself. Traxx is kind of winding down their trail work because of the weather, and folks are leaving for the winter. But they're going to continue to have trail days, workdays on Mondays, as long as the weather's permitting and people are willing to do it. I believe they're working on the Buena Vista Trail on Monday. That's about a half a day's commitment, and they do a lot of good work. They also had about 100 volunteers at the Tour of the White Mountains Bike Race 10 days ago. That was very successful, and we always get a lot of compliments from epic rides on the volunteers that we're able to produce out there. Traxx is still working on the maps, the new maps that we talked about several months ago, and I think they're really making headway on those. So, they're continuing to move ahead and do the best they can. I just want to shout, give a shout out to our Myatt kids. They're working on some new initiatives. They listened today to a presentation from a lady who works with Read Better, Be Better, but it's a program for civic engagement, and they're hoping to bring that into Blue Ridge, so that the kids will continue learning more about how they can be involved in their community now and into their adult lives. So, I think that's really exciting. They served lunch at the Community Center today, and they're just an amazing group of kids. They're very involved in everything. I think almost the entire committee is going to be in the musical Hello, Dolly in the spring, well, actually, in February, late February. So, it's a great group of kids. Anyway, Kristy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Irwin. So, in Rick Miller's absence, he's spending some quality time with his family, so please remember to keep them in your thoughts and prayers. I wanted to prepare a report for council that I think is pretty important. I think you all know it's been a couple of tough months, a couple of tough months, which it has been for you as well. But I just wanted to take a minute to thank every single employee of the town. We have awesome employees who have persevered and have moved forward, and it's pretty amazing to see. And I think it's important now that we start working on employee morale and relationships between departments. So, I wanted to kind of give you all and the people in the audience here in the public just some highlights of what each department is doing right now, projects that they're working on completed or they have upcoming. So, I'm going to start with the Finance Department. They're currently working on getting revised budget numbers built into the reporting. They're working with Zion Bank on refinancing our high-interest debt. They're starting a review of the town's purchasing policies. Stacy and Sarah have started working on the audit, and Stacy is working on the town manager position. It closed last night. She's working on the applicant files. There's no timeline yet, but she has a meeting with a recruiter on Monday for the screening process. And then after that, we'll have a better timeline, and she's encouraging all of council, if you haven't, to come in and review the applications for that position. The library is going to be having a groundwater exhibit for homeschooling students K through 12 on October 23rd and 24th, both from 9:00 to 1:30. And then we just want to encourage you all to check out the amazing assortment that the library has to offer, everything from book club to weekly cheer yoga. And it's all on our town website under the calendar for the library. And our IT department said that all cameras, network, and IT functions are complete at the police department. Ryan is looking at all licensing and the town to reduce overlapping software pricing. Meeting next week, he's meeting next week to look at reducing the cost of the town phone system, not the cell phones that we supplied with the system that we use throughout the town. He's working with Detective Ricky Bunch to install a mobile data terminal in the new police department Polaris UTV. And with that, I'm going to go straight into the police department. The Polaris UTV has been outfitted. It just got back with its lights and sirens, and I heard it's looking pretty great. So, they're excited about that. This is another piece of exciting news. K-9 ARCO is currently en route from Phoenix to Pinetop right now. He went, Officer Gauna flew out and brought him back today, or they're driving up today. And then he's going to be starting his handler training next week, Monday, I believe, Officer Gauna. Detective Bunch tested yesterday for his drone pilot operator license and passed. So, he'll be able to utilize the drone that the town has and use for events, for anything police services, but we can also use it for events. So, that's exciting. The camera housings were built for the jail cells. They have been installed and are up and running, and the benches are being built for the jail cells. And I have to tell you, Chief Barnes built the housing himself for the cameras in the jail cells and installed them. And Chief Barnes is also currently building the benches for the jail cells to save money. A lot of cost savings there. So, thank you, Chief Barnes. Your talents do not go unnoticed. The PD, I think just today, Chief was notified that we received a grant award from ADQ to outfit some gas masks that we received from a grant a few years ago. But the gas masks did not have voice projector units, so ADQ gave us a grant amount of $8,035 to add those voice projectors to those gas masks, so the officers can talk to each other. DPS gave the town a mobile fingerprinting device. This will allow officers to do fingerprinting in the field, so they're currently training on that. I have some September traffic violation numbers for you. September stats for the PD, 57 total violations in September, 15 criminal, 27 moving violations, and 15 warnings, and there were 31 misdemeanor and felony arrests for September. We have a lateral police officer from White Mountain Apache Tribe starting on November 3rd. His name is Mike Lomayatewa. Michael. So, we'll welcome him when he gets here. We're excited to have a full PD staff, I think, with that. Public Works, this has had some big changes. Today was the last day for Public Works Director Matt Patterson and Street Supervisor Connor Stevenson, and they'll be missed at the Public Works Department. But with that, I want to congratulate Melena Spillman on being named the Intern Public Works Director. I especially want to thank Melena for the updates she provided everyone last week, and I think council was all on that with the multiple weather webinars that she attended. She gave out an amazing report on the weather, and I appreciated that, and I'm sure you all did too, as many of us travel a lot. So. Public Works Department has been working on paving the top of the woods subdivision. It is now complete and looks great. Melena said they do have a few small things to work on up there, just a few small tasks and just clean up. But I was up there one day last week when it was raining. It was looking great. And then went there this morning, and it's looking pretty good. So. Upcoming projects for Public Works, they started today, I believe, on the Mountain Meadow Basketball Parking Lot. Is that right? You want to? Yeah, do it.
So, as Kristy said, it was Matt's last day today, and so, in true Matt fashion, it was full force ahead, full steam ahead, and they were able to get all of the access road and continuation of the path from the ADA, what we use is the ADA parking for all the events there by the concession stand. So, all the way from there down to the north end of the soccer field, all the GeoGrid, or the GeoTextile fabric, it's a GeoGrid fabric that's like a, it's a poly, it's a plastic, cool, really looking cool grid. Anyway, it helps stabilize, so that if they're shifting or everything, anything, that we don't have that failures in the asphalt. That was completed all the way down, and they've gotten over half of the parking lot completed just today. So, that was a huge step forward in trying to get our staff ahead of the game.
Thank you, Melena. They're also working on a section of the ADA path, just finishing the paving. It's approximately about a third of a mile. They have to finish that path around Mountain Meadow Park. They're also working on winter readiness, doing some safety training, route reviews, and truck maintenance, you know, getting ready for the upcoming, hopefully, snow. And then Melena just walked over and gave me an update a few minutes ago. On 10-2, she presented to you guys on the Woodland Lake Road, State Route 260 project. The engineer is Logan Simpson and Infra. Did I say that right? Yeah. So, she wanted me to give you an update on that. Okay, Clerk Department. There was a Myatt meeting this morning. I won't talk about it too much, because Mayor just talked about all the amazing things that the Myatt kids are doing, and that's what I was going to share there. The ordinance for the medical and recreational marijuana, as well as the town council agenda items, have met their 30-day posting requirements, and those are all effective, and they'll be in the newspaper tomorrow. I attended coffee with council earlier this week. Vice Mayor Buse and Counselor Phillips led the discussions. It was, the popular topics for this month were the town's budget and annexation. I feel like attendance was good for this meeting. For citizens interested in getting candid answers and conversations with council, those meetings are held once a month at Pinetop Coffee, and I don't remember what day it is.
Tuesday.
The first Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock.
But the November one may be changed, because it's Veterans Day.
Okay, but we'll have that on our website, and we'll also talk about it in our first meeting in November, to remind everybody. I've been asked to speak at the next PVC meeting, the first Wednesday in November, just regarding what the town has done to balance the budget. I told them I'd be happy to do that. I'm leading a committee to review the town employee policies. We did have a meeting last week. We had a council, because we had four people that were absent that day due to sickness or just being out for doctor's appointments. So, we'll be rescheduling that next week, and we're looking forward to getting started on that. Annie and I are working, are going to start working closely together on getting, some creative ways on getting information out to the voters on the importance of home rule that will be on the 2026 ballot. Community development. Jeremiah said that Pinetop Fire has submitted their site plan for review. He said it's a big one, and he's expecting it to go to Planning and Zoning Commission in late November or early December. So, look for that one. This is an exciting one. Jack Pence, who is the chairman of Planning and Zoning Commission, has asked to assist, or actually offered to assist Jeremiah as an intern, free of charge, in the engineering... as an intern, free of charge, in the engineering to help with the pickleball court. So, we are now going to have two civil engineers working on that project with you, Malena. Awesome. And so, we definitely appreciate Jack's help and willingness to help with that project, and he's looking forward to having something to do since. He's very well-qualified, retired from, I want to say Scottsdale, but very nice of him. Zoned Properties Incorporated is working on a site plan for the Dual Marijuana Dispensary. Jeremiah has confirmed that the use will be locked in with their site plan. Jeremiah also said that he has received the numbers from Navajo County for the Lakeside West Annexation Area. So, for that one, we'll just wait on that for some council guidance. I don't know if you want to wait until you hire a town manager, but we have the numbers for that now. I'm almost done. Community Services, Community Service has been partnering with Friends of the Library for upcoming Autumn Fest, Autumn Fun Fest, I'm sorry, a free event for children 10 and under at the Nature Center on October 28th from 2:00 to 4:30. With Tony's departure, Annie has been working to maintain his community liaison roles and keep upcoming events on track. Please mark your calendars for the annual mayor's tree lighting on December 5th. This is a great community tradition. It's one of my favorite events we have. In Communications, two press releases were published to keep residents informed about the town's budget adjustments and staffing changes. The public response has been positive, with many expressing appreciation for the town's transparency. Additional updates will be shared as we move through the town's manager hiring process. Our marketing efforts have been strongly, or strong, the recent Take Life Slower campaign to encourage slower driving speeds reached over 152,000 views. It generated 3,500 interactions, which is pretty good. They are now running a six-part Be Bear Smart Series to educate residents and visitors on responsible trash management. Please help by liking and sharing the photos Annie has posted on Facebook and, I think, other social media avenues that we have. Finally, color coverage on our visitor's sitter channels has drawn over a half a million views with 20,000 interactions. They also produced highlight videos for two new local businesses, the Depot Coffee Shop and Niko's Asian Fusion. Both received excellent engagement. If you haven't visited them yet, I highly recommend checking those two new businesses out. I spoke with the owner of the Depot the other day, and she was thrilled with the work that the town did for her new business. She said within an hour of the town coming there, taking pictures and videos and putting it together, it was posted up on Instagram, and she had 150 new followers within, I think she said, an hour or two. So, getting out there and helping our local businesses is important, and it's making a big impact for them. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Christine. I don't think we have any other business tonight, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here.